Good evening and welcome to the October 11th meeting of the Stowe Select Board. We, as you can see, only have three members with us tonight, Ms. Clark, Justice Stansus, and myself. Again, this meeting is being recorded. And I do want to remind people to make sure that you state your name whenever I call on you for a comment. I will start with any public comment, not for issues on the agenda this evening. Yes?
Hi, Dorothy Granite, 11 White Pine Road. And I was hoping that the Select Board would ensure the four requirements from the geography of the Board of Health are fulfilled before the licenses are renewed. It did not appear when I looked online on the state site that one of those was done. I called the Building Commissioner and the Board of Health in the town. They don't know about it, so if it could be easier to find out the information that was done. Another thing regarding the ARND funds. There's quite a few records in the town, in the Planning Board Department, in the Board of Health, that show concerns that weren't addressed at one of the properties that we benefit from the loss of the conservation land. It would be nice if that was looked into. I don't feel that someone should be benefiting from water from another property if their property isn't clear that they're not have concerns. There were test results with total hydrocarbons of over thirty thousand, which was really high. It's never followed up. And it's not in the DEP records, so it would be easily found by someone. But it's in the records here at the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can take that into advisement, under advisement. Anybody else? Anyone on the Zoom?
Nope.
No? Okay. Do we have any board member comments? Any word? Yes, Hector.
First, I'd like to recognize October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month as well, and also LGBT History Month. In addition, there was a Facebook conversation about campaign signs on the Common. Some went missing, and we weren't quite clear what happened. And Denise had some more information about those signs than if I'd like, I'd like for her to fill us in with.
Sure.
So there was some concern because signs were missing. The practice of the Highway Department has been when they cut the grass, they remove any signs that are impeding their grass cutting. And then as to not appear to be putting political signs up, they have always removed them and taken them back to the highway yard to allow whoever has posted them to collect them and re-put them up. Unfortunately, this past time, these signs that were removed were inadvertently thrown away. I did inform Hector, we did launch an internal investigation to make sure there was no malice. It was everything we can determine. It was just an accident. Signs had been put back up there, and we just encourage folks not to put them on the public grass because they will be removed. We are expecting one more lawn cutting this season. But otherwise, the mulch areas or in the Common, we've talked about having them, if they're removed, either laying them on the side or putting them in the little former bus shelter so that people can retrieve them. So hopefully, we do not have that incident again. I apologize for those signs being removed and disposed of.
Thank you. Anything else? No? All right, if you will indulge me, I want to take a point of personal privilege to address the Town Administrator Review Process with the hopes that we can move forward as a board. The reason I'm taking the time to address this is because there's still misinformation surrounding the process that is being perpetuated within the community. I wanted to set the record straight, at least from my perspective as the current Chair of this Board. According to the Town Charter in Section 4.1, "The Board of Selectmen shall, not less frequently than annually, review the job performance of the Town Administrator and establish objectives for ensuing periods." Copies of the review and objectives shall, at least in summary form, be a public record. There is nothing in the law that would allow a review of the Town Administrator to be conducted in private. In fact, it is the opposite. And I quote from the AG's Guide to the Open Meeting Law, "Where a public body is discussing an employee evaluation considering applicants for a position or discussing the qualifications of any individual, these discussions should be held in open session to the extent that the discussion deals with issues other than the reputation, character, health, or any complaints or charges against the individual." I was not aware of any of these issues in this review process. Had we conducted the review in private, in executive session, we would have been breaking the law. The disconnect in this process seems to come down to the statement, at least in summary form. "As we had decided as a board in previous meetings, we were going to have our Assistant Town Administrator compile our comments and present them as summaries within the individual sections of the review. Had all of the comments been in the same vein, I believe this process would have been different." However, this was not the case. And instead of being accused of leaving any information out of the summary review, Dolores included all of our comments in the individual sections. I understood as a public official that my comments in this review that was submitted to the Assistant Town Administrator, as are any of the comments that I make in my role as a Select Board Member, to be public record. And with that, I approached my written commentary with that in mind. "I absolutely regret any emotional and professional distress that this may have caused. However, I, as the Chair, did not see the entire packet, including the written review, until the rest of the Board did. It is my understanding that in this role, my responsibility is to set the agenda and not to review the underlying documents before my fellow elected Board Members have had the chance to." And with that, I am thrilled that one of the items we will be discussing this evening is the Charter Review. Perhaps we can provide some additional clarity in this particular section and avoid the issues that we regrettably went through this year. Thank you. And with that, our Town Administrator.
Thank you. As of last Thursday, October 6th, we have twelve cases of COVID in town for a 6.53 positivity rate. And while that is up from our last meeting, we are still below the county and state average, which is still about seven point five percent. A final reminder that our flu clinic will be held at Pompo this Saturday, October 15th. Information, including the pre-registration requirement, can be found on our website and on Facebook. The Board of Health has free COVID home test kits available. They are still available at Pompo, the Stowe Food Pantry, the Board of Health Office, and the Randall Library. They will also have a supply on hand at the flu clinic. I am pleased to say that we have received sixteen new defibrillators that were purchased with our ARPFAF funds. They finally came in last week. These will be distributed throughout the buildings, doubling the number of units that we now have available in public facilities. I am also pleased to announce that in addition to the new employees that you are appointing tonight, we have finally hired a procurement or grants administrator that will also be funded through the ARPFAF funds. She is scheduled to begin on October 31st and comes to us from the town of Littleton. It's very exciting. Due to the fact that the state election is Tuesday, November 8th, we will need to reschedule our first November meeting. I know Hector is away the first week of the month, and Jonathan is scheduled to be away the first few weeks. My recommendation is we would reschedule it to November 15th and have two back-to-back meetings. There is a possibility that it would not be broadcast live because Jonathan would not be back. But if that's the case, we could record it on Zoom and broadcast that after the fact. So if no one has any objections to the 15th, we will move ahead with scheduling it for that evening.
Just to point to record, I will be back on November 1st, so if...
Oh, I had you out through the 4th.
Nope, I'll be back November 1st, but I don't know if that changes anything.
I don't know that I am available November 1st, but we could certainly be that way.
So that's fine.
Why don't we do the 15th? Well, I think I would prefer the 15th, just to...
The 15th is fine.
Okay.
And then unfortunately, some sad news. Our Highway Superintendent Steve Nadeau has submitted his retirement intention. He plans to leave us mid-December for his retirement. So you will be seeing that job posted in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we've got a bunch of appointments tonight. Three for the Highway Department and two for the Randall Library Building Committee. So let's go ahead. And Denise, did you want to say anything about the first three?
So I will start with the promotion of Jerry Kamara. He's been in the Highway Department for a couple of years now. He has been great. He's certainly stepped up to fill in to the vacant highway mechanic and has definitely proved his worth. I'm excited about the fact that we are promoting him and think he will do a really great job streamlining and record-keeping a lot of the processes there that we've had. So I think he'll be a great, it'll be a great move for him and the town.
Excellent.
Do you want me to mention the other two?
Yeah, why don't we do that, and then we can go ahead and do, and none of them are on?
They are not. I don't believe they're on. So Cory and Dean are coming to us new. They both have great credentials, a lot of experience, a lot of experience with plowing, both of them have, which is huge for us coming into the winter months. And both have a lot of experience driving equipment. They do have to go through their CDL process. One of them has their permit. But we now, as we are under the Teamsters Union, they provide CDL training for us as part of our services. So we expect that they will excel at both of those training opportunities and be fully licensed in the upcoming months. So we're very excited about having them onboard.
Excellent. Any, any questions? No? Steve, did you want to say anything? I see you're on, but...
I'd have to unmute him.
I'm all set.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, I'll take a motion.
Read them individually?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I have moved to promote Jerry Kamara to the position of Highway Mechanic. Should I read?
Second.
Let's, we have to do them individually, I think, yeah.
So second, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Keep them coming.
I have moved to appoint Cory Parks to the position of Highway Driver Laborer.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Nope. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous.
I move to appoint Dean Osborne to the position of Highway Driver Laborer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. All right, fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of them.
Yes, absolutely. And now we have two appointments to the Randall Library Building Committee 2.0. And Denise?
So as I mentioned in my memo, Lisa and Kat are both familiar faces with the library project. They both served on the Preliminary Design Committee. They will be a great addition to the full building committee, and I'm excited to be recommending them this evening.
Excellent. Any questions?
No.
Any questions? Did you want to say anything?
Kat Copeland, I just would love your vote so that we can continue this project and carry it to fruition.
Awesome.
I know Lisa and I are both invested in it, so we appreciate your vote.
Yes, and Lisa is away this evening and sounds her regrets. She wished she could be here.
Absolutely. With that, I will take a motion.
I move to appoint Lisa Lavina to the Randall Library Building Committee 2.0 to serve until the project is complete and the renovated library is fully open.
You're doing the same thing.
I'm gonna do the same thing, sorry.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
None.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to appoint Kat Copeland to the Randall Library Building Committee 2.0 to serve until the project is complete and the renovated library is fully open.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kat.
Both of you, even though Lisa can't hear it.
Yes. Watch it later. All right, do we have our Town Clerk?
I am guessing this is gonna be her, so let me see. Nope. Yeah, she is.
Yeah.
Hello, Linda.
Is she muted?
She's muted.
I sent her a request to you.
I'm unmuted.
Excellent. All right.
Yeah, so I would appreciate you signing that warrant. We'll get it posted. You'll notice that there are four questions on the ballot, or on the warrant anyway, and it'll be on the ballot. The fourth question is not in those little ready handbooks that everybody should have received a couple of weeks ago, but it is on the Secretary's website. That question came in after the deadline to print the booklets.
Got it.
So anyway, the information will be on the Secretary of State's website. We received our ballots today for the election. We've been waiting patiently. The deadline was actually tomorrow to get them to us. So now we're ready to mail out eighteen hundred ballots. That's what I have requests for so far. And when I went back to look at what, how we're doing in 2020, we had, at this period of time, we had over three thousand requests. So numbers are down a little bit, but I think we'll be all right. And we're gonna work hard over the next few days to get them all out. I expect to have everything mailed out by Tuesday at the latest.
Okay.
And we do have, just to let you know, we do have early voting in person, and it starts the 22nd of October. And all that information is on our website. We have a lot of, under the Town Meeting and Election page and on the Clerk's page. But in-person voting will take place downstairs, starts on the 22nd and goes through the Friday, the 4th. And then on Election Day is the 8th. That'll be at Center School. There's no school that day. And the other thing that I wanted to point out and let you be aware of is, under the new law that was passed, ballots that I receive on Election Day that are dropped at the drop box, we are actually going to be processing, anything that comes in after three o'clock will be processed on November 12th because that's the deadline for us to receive ballots that are mailed to us. So I'm gonna recommend that everybody who gets a ballot, mail to them. Get them in as soon as possible, hopefully the week before the election, so that'll make it easier for our election workers to get everything counted. And my deadline, I just, somebody asked me, so the election's over on the 8th? You can't wait till the night's over yet for the clerks? November 23rd, the day before Thanksgiving is our deadline to have everything certified to the Secretary of State's. So we'll be busy.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's all for now.
Thank you, Linda. Does anybody have any questions about the election? No? No? I will take a motion.
I move to sign the November 2022 election warrant as presented at this meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And check the website for all the information and updates.
We will.
All right, so next we have Stowe Girl Scout Troop 62427 here to give us a little presentation about a community service project they'd like to do. So which one of you will be starting? Going this way? All right.
Hi, my name is Elsie Kono. We are in Girl Scout Cadet Troop 62427. We've been a troop since kindergarten, and we are currently in sixth grade. We're here tonight to talk to you about making and putting up banners honoring our veterans in Stowe, just like in Bolton and Maynard. We are supposed to do this project with minimum adult help. We'd like to put up these banners for our Silver Award. The Silver Award is a community service award that cadets can earn. We need to teach a life skill, and we also need to advocate for change in a policy. By putting up these banners, we would teach younger troops about the steps we took to work with the town to make this possible.
Hello, my name is Ebi Brewsta. We'd like banners of Stowe veterans put up in order to honor our Stowe veterans. We'd like to have some uniformity on 117 between the three towns of Stowe, Bolton, and Maynard. Bolton and Maynard already have these banners up. Once we receive the banners, we'd like to do a dedication ceremony at the veteran memorial that is in front of the Randall Library.
Hi, I'm Olivia Cole. Some of the things that we would need to do is gather some information by talking to Stowe Veterans Agent Mr. Jacobs. We'd also contact veterans' families to ask for permission and pictures, to have the veteran's name and picture put on the banner.
Hi, my name is Kate DeShano. Some of the other things that we would need to do is talk with people from Bolton and Maynard, asking what they did to get the banners up. We would need to ask permission from the Hudson Light and Power Department to put the banners up on the telephone poles. And we need to ask the Highway Department for assistance and use up the bucket truck once it has been delivered.
Hi, I'm Lila White. Thank you for your time today and for letting us, Girl Scout Cadet Troop 62427, present our ideas on having banners put up to honor the Stowe veterans. We're looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. I love that this is a, this is something that you guys want to do. Do you have any questions for them?
No, I had some questions, but the way you went through it and talked about who you were going to speak with and how you were gonna do this with the bucket trucks and getting permission and the pictures and how you're gonna get the pictures was very well done, so thank you.
And as a town veteran, I would like to thank you very much for doing this project.
This is great. So I think what we're gonna do tonight is we will take a vote, and that's gonna give you all permission to, as long as we all say yes. What'll give you permission to be able to start your project, okay? And we would love to have you all come back, I think, once it's done, to really, you know, give us an update on it anytime, okay? So with that, I will ta, did you have anything you wanted to add? No, I will take a motion.
I move to grant permission for Stowe Girl Scout Cadets and Troops 62427 to carry out their community project honoring soldiers with banners posted on telephone poles along Route 117 as presented at this meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to hearing more about it. Thank you so much.
And it was well written, your things were well written.
Yes, you did a great job.
Advocacy and continuity, all good.
Yep, fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, guys.
You just, you could be future select people here.
I am, seriously. Put us out of jump. All right. I'm very excited to hear from Mary Jude Pigsley, the Regional Director of Mass DEP, with an update about PFAS.
Sure, I'm not sure where you want me to stand, and I do have some slides.
Whatever works.
I know with your camera situation.
And you're welcome to sit, you're welcome to stand.
Stand, do whatever.
I mean, you can sit here.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yes, absolutely. This is information we are...
I appreciate the invitation, and with me too, Kevin Dousk is in our Bureau of ways to clean up. He's the Section Chief who has the distinction of managing all of our PFAS cases in the region. So Kevin and six people are working on PFAS exclusively in our office. I have to say, though, the Girl Scouts are a tough act.
They did a great job. They did their homework.
So we're really happy that you invited us back. Not the first time we've been to Stowe to talk about PFAS. Probably not the last. I want to just fly through some of these slides. I know you know a lot about it already, and then just take your questions. I have a map on here, but I also brought a blow-up of it. I didn't bring the foam board to put it up on, but we could just put it on the table if that would be helpful.
Okay.
So the slides also have some links to parts of the websites that you might want to use. And the Town Administrator has the presentation, so that you will have to post if you want to and to look at.
Yes, and I'm gonna ask you to just bear with me for a moment.
There's two copies.
The computer's running a little slow because we're not on our own network, so it's just taking a second. Okay. You good?
Yes.
Okay, so this will be just sort of a little refresher, if you want to go to the next slide. Talk about what PFAS are. They're per polyfluoroalkyl substances, a family, a very big family of man-made chemicals. They're referred to as forever chemicals. And like I said, I know you guys know most of this, so I'm just gonna fly through that. So the next slide. They're in everything. Lots and lots of consumer products, you have smudge-proof mascara, microwave popcorn bags, anything that's waterproof, grease-proof, things like that. And as you very well know, in Stowe, the A triple F firefighting foam. So everybody has been exposed to PFAS at some point in time. The reason we regulate PFAS, the exposures of concern, are for the sensitive groups of pregnant women, nursing mothers, infants, and people who are immune compromised. So when you talk about exposure and regulating based on risk, there are three things that matter. It's the sensitivity of the person or the population, the concentration of the contaminant, and the frequency with which you're exposed to it. So when you talk about PFAS or any kind of contamination in drinking water, if you're drinking the water every day, so drinking water in your home, as opposed to here in the Town Hall or at Dunkin' Donuts, if you had any in town.
You had to go there.
I did have to go there, too. So in a residential setting, if you're in a sensitive group, and then depending on the toxicity level, those are the people at the highest risk. If you're not in one of those groups, or you're drinking water at the Town Hall and not in your home, there's lesser risk. But some people are adverse to any kind of risk at any level of PFAS. And if you feel that way, you can drink and cook with bottled water. It's something that is pretty common for other reasons. People use bottled water. There are also home treatment devices you can put on your taps. They're not, there's not any kind of national organization that certifies that they will get to the Massachusetts drinking water standard, but they are available. Next slide. Just a slide on the health effects. Again, I think you all are very well-versed in PFAS. But effects on the immune system, decreased responses to vaccinations, developmental delays, low birth weights, and then there is increased lifetime cancer risk. So there are the short-term to the sensitive populations, and then there is a long-term lifetime cancer risk. And there's a link on the bottom of that slide to a CDC website. There's the Agency of Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, the ATSDR. That's part of the CDC, and they have a wealth of information. And in particular, that agency develops the toxicity values that go into that equation of sensitivity and exposure and toxicity. So something that we talk about when we come to different towns is to make sure people understand that it matters where your water comes from. There are public water supply wells, which don't have to be owned by a public entity. They are wells that serve twenty-five or more people a day, even if they're privately owned. The private wells serve fewer than twenty-five people, even if they're publicly owned. So for the Stowe Town Hall, Town Building, if they're fewer than twenty-five people, that's a bad example because this is a public water system. But even if it's a public building, if it doesn't serve twenty-five people, DEP does not regulate it. So, you know, it's important, as I go through the rest of the slides, to think about, am I on a private well, or am I part of a public water system? So we have two standards for PFAS. They're the same number. We have a drinking water standard, which is for public water systems that DEP regulates. And then we have a cleanup standard for private wells, for contamination in private wells. Both of them are twenty parts per trillion for six PFAS chemicals combined. The six were chosen based on those toxicity studies and our science experts in the Boston office who developed the standard. The cleanup standard went into effect in December of 2019, and the drinking water standard went into effect in October of 2020. Next one. So the public water systems in the town of Stowe are up here on the slide. So these are community systems where people live every day, drink the water, the same water every day, and they are regulated by DEP. There are also non-community systems, which are things like the schools. We'll talk about the schools in a second. But this is just showing at the point where I made the slides, which was about a month ago, the, whether any of these public water systems have had exceedances of the drinking water standard. And both of the Pilot Grove developments have, but the others have not. All of the drinking water data for public water systems, not just PFAS, but lead and copper and iron and manganese and all of the things that we regulate is available. All that data is on the website of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs through what's called a data portal. And I'm not sure I put the link up there, but I can definitely send that along. And you can just search on any of these, or the Hale Middle School, or the Center School, or you can see all of the water quality data. It's publicly available to everybody. or you can see all of the water quality data. It's publicly available to everybody. So, um, that's for public water supplies. I think primarily when we're talking about Stow, we're talking about private wells. And what the Chapter twenty-one E, the cleanup uh, program that Kevin works in, any location where hazardous materials have come to be located is what we call a site with a capital S. So, when I say site, when we're talking about some of the things on the map, it is um, site with a capital S, that it's being regulated by us. Owners, operators, anybody who brought stuff to the site or arranged for things to go to a site are responsible to clean it up. And it's a program that requires the responsible parties to hire licensed site professionals who are certified by Mass DEP to um, go through this rigorous test process, have many years of experience in order to be able to develop and manage site cleanups. Next one. So, here is the map that you're looking at um, in Stow. So, how we got here is even before we had the drinking water standard or the cleanup standard, we knew that there was PFAS in the area because of our work in Hudson. And um, we had a, a voluntary program that DEP for free would come and, and sample public water systems. And the school district offered that we, they would sample at the, the two schools in Center Town. And there was PFAS. We did not promulgate the standard yet, but we knew it was gonna be around twenty and the results exceeded twenty. So, immediately, I think it was the first time I came to Stow to talk about PFAS. Um, immediately, the school district provided bottled water and they were cooking the food off-site. And we started looking, Kevin and, and team started looking for where could this be coming from? And because of the amount of, of um, locations all over the country where the source of PFAS has been firefighting foam, we started looking at the fire station. We im- did not immediately turn to the town and say, you have a problem, you are a responsible party, as I just described, you have to clean it up. We did a lot of sampling, talked a lot to the board, um, as it was constituted at the time, to the Town Administrator at the time. Um, wo- worked through a lot. I think we sampled more than a hundred wells. And we came to the conclusion that it really was coming from the fire station. And the data, if you, if you go in and you take a look at the data, you can really see that it's sort of the bullseye in um, in the center there. What um, what has happened is we've transitioned the cleanup to the town. And I think, is it, next slide, I might have a blow up of the center of town?
No.
No, okay. Can you go to the next one?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Nope.
There you go. So, this is um, you can see better, and I'm sorry, the red, yellow, greens, our printer didn't print them right, unfortunately. So, the orange is actually the yellow. But the red, yellow, green is, is the easy way that we can see if a site is green is good, you know, it's below, it's non-detect. Yellow is detected, but it's below the drinking water standard of twenty parts per trillion. Red is above twenty parts per trillion. Um, for Stow, we had to come up with another color, which is magenta, the hot pink, because those are over what we call our imminent hazard level, which is ninety parts per trillion, and that requires immediate action. But in this cleanup, whenever we've, we've discovered any detections of PFAS, people have been given bottled water. And then people whose wells exceed the twenty parts per trillion, um, are getting point-of-entry treatment systems in their homes, which treats all the water coming in, not just the tap, the, the water at the sink. Um, so you can see in the, the very center where the fire station is, is where the magenta is concentrated. And then as the site boundary goes out, you get more and more greens and you get to stop looking when you're surrounded by the greens. When you have a detection, we go out five hundred feet to sample the wells. We get another detection, go out five hundred feet. So, we keep drawing these bubbles around. And the things with the circles around them in the center, those are the public water supply wells, the town well and the two schools. So, that's um, they're not regulated under Chapter twenty-one E. They're regulated under the drinking water program. So, the schools already have treatment on the wells. Um, that happened very quickly. Um, unlike um, private wells, where the twenty-one E program says, we'll find who's responsible and they have to clean it up. A public water supplier has to clean up the public water supply. And that's just, that's just the rule. So, if you couldn't go back to the one with the list?
Yes.
Thank you. So, these are um, five of the twenty-one E sites in town. Um, there's a, another one that's in Hudson that has had some uh, spillover into Stow. And the way we track these sites are through what's called a release tracking number, which showed up as the RTN. I have some slides later that are, are really boring screenshots, but it shows you how anybody can take this release tracking number and go to our website and plug in the number, and they can see all of the documents and click on them and read all of the documents and all of the data to show what's going on at each of these sites. So, clearly, you're um, well aware of, of the, the center of town and what the town's LSP has, has been doing. Um, and my understanding is, and Kevin correct me if I'm wrong, we really do think that you're getting to the edge, that you know, we're getting enough greens that you've um, identified the extent of the contamination. And then the uh, assessment cleanup process moves on to figuring out what to do about it. But the first step is to make sure you identify everybody who might be drinking the water and mitigate that exposure. And it's, it sounds like this, this site is coming to um, close to the end of that. The uh, Fire Academy is a site. The former Gleeson Dale Mill is a site where private wells have been contaminated. Bose of One Great Road has some contamination. And most recently, the area near Wedgewood, what is it called? Wedgewood? Wedgewood? Yeah.
Country. Golf course?
The golf course, yeah. So, if um, if you want, I have just some information about how many private wells are sampled at each of these sites, or I can send that to you. I don't know how much time you have to, to listen to all the, all this stuff.
I think you can, can send it. Or, sorry. No, I was saying, I think she, I think it's important for her to talk about. Oh, no, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So, in the, in the center of town, I think there are about a hundred and eighty-two private wells that were sampled between DEP and the Town of Stow. Um, at DFS, that's uh, on the other side of White Pond from Hudson. So, there's contamination in Hudson that's related to an industrial facility there. On the side, the Stow side of White Pond is Fire Services. There are some private wells. They sampled twelve near the Fire Academy. Um, they ranged from, Kevin, help me, non-detect?
About three to nine-ish.
Yeah.
Parts per trillion.
Yeah, six of the houses were non-detect. So, those were all well below the drinking water standard. And you can see that on, on the map. It's, it's greens and what would be yellow if the printer would elaborate. Um, so, uh, Department of Fire Services, Fire Marshal's Office is working through the same steps that everybody has to work through. And they're assessing the contamination on their site. But they did, the involvement of the private wells in that site has been very small. At Gleeson Dale, um, did I put up a separate map of Gleeson Dale? I'm not sure I did.
Thank you, Dan.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go. So, Gleeson Dale, the contamination, uh, again, you look at the reds and go out, started by the old mill property. The owner of the property and related companies were identified as the potentially responsible parties and started doing the work, and then they stopped. And they have told us that they're not gonna do any more work and they can't afford it. We have a process where people who don't have the money to clean up can file with us what's called financial inability. And we have a process, uh, we, people in Boston, financial people have a process of going through and evaluating those claims. Uh, they haven't filed for financial inability, but the work is not getting done. So, the Commonwealth has stepped in and is continuing to do the investigation. So, at Gleeson Dale, there are forty-two private wells sampled with concentrations ranging between one point six and thirty-two point three parts per trillion. So, it's the same routine that we do if um, you're over the standard. Green is good. If you're, if you're over the standard and it's red, you will get a point-of-entry treatment system installed. If you are yellow, so there's detection, but it's below the drinking water standard, we're providing bottled water. Um, Bose, there's not a lot around there. There were four private wells sampled. Um, they are also far along in figuring out what the extent of the contamination is. So, they are kind of in the same situation that the town is. They've done extensive, not as extensive as the town, because there weren't that many wells, but they've reached the edge, we believe. And then the uh, the new site at the, by the golf course was actually, the information came to us from a homeowner who tested their own well and provided the information to us. We're looking into that. We have recently reached out to eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven surrounding properties doing the five hundred foot circles that we do to try to identify if anybody else's wells are um, contaminated and to mitigate that exposure. Uh, if you look down at Hudson, you can see the Chestnut and Kane Well Field. And as part of the Hudson investigation that's been ongoing, um, we were continuing to draw the circles. You know, there's a contaminated well, go five hundred feet out, and that basically took us across the town line. I mean, contaminated water has no respect for municipal boundaries. So, um, we are now, so there were twenty, twenty private wells sampled as part of investigating the contamination at the Town of Hudson's Chestnut Street Wells. Um, fifteen of those, twenty are in Stow. Eighteen of them had uh, detections. The concentrations ranged between three point nine and seventy-seven parts per trillion in those wells. So, with these release tracking numbers that you have, anyone could go online and get all the information if they're interested in finding out about these specific sites. And then finally, um, I know someone on the board had a question about the UMass program, where um, we were able to sample private wells for people in towns that were not served by municipal water. And we sampled forty-two wells in Stow under that program. Out of the forty-two, we sampled twenty-four were non-detect. Eleven had detections that were below the standard and seven had detections above the standard. So, if there's a private well that's contaminated and there is no obvious source in the area, that homeowner is their own water supplier. So, the homeowner who tests and finds PFAS and it's not immediately obvious what it is, that homeowner is responsible for putting on a treatment system or not, it would, you know, whatever degree of risk people are comfortable with. So, if you go to this link, is the uh, part of the data portal for the state that deals with waste site cleanup sites. And then these are just slides that walk you through very quickly how you would get to see. You would plug in a release tracking number. If you have the release tracking number, you don't have to put anything else in the boxes. That will take you right there. So, you click on that, and then that will come up. That will be the only search result, cause you put in the RTN. You click on that. If you wanted to, you could find all the sites in Stow. You could search for different things. So, you get to this sort of summary page, and what you wanna do is click on supporting documents, because that will take you to the next screen that lists all of the documents that have been filed since the beginning of the site. And the ones that are blue are live links. So, you just click on that link for whatever it is that you wanna look at, and it will take you to the document. So, you can sit and read. Some of these documents are hundreds of pages long, because they have lab reports and everything. But if you really wanted to know what was going on at a site, it is all there for everybody to see. Um, I wanna give you one little update that's not related to Stow, but something I think the, the board would be interested in and people who have um, private wells may be interested in, is that there is no national standard for PFAS. Mass DE, uh, DEP is one of sixteen states that regulates PFAS. The other thirty-four don't. But EPA recently announced back in June that they are gonna uh, issue a national drinking water standard for PFAS. So, they have put out information about the toxicity values and the things that they're gonna use in that determination, which is not even gonna be draft until the end of this year. But it is very likely, based on the information they put out there, that the federal standard is gonna be lower than our standard. So, if there are public water systems out there who haven't um, haven't thought about putting on treatment because their number is somewhere between ten and twenty, and that's fine. Under our drinking water program, it's okay. If, as long as it's below twenty, even if it's detected, that's compliant with our standard. This new number, when it comes out, will be lower and some of these public water systems may be in a position later that they need treatment. So, we're just talking to public water systems. And in Stow, it's difficult, because it's a lot of things like apartments and condominiums, not a municipal system. But the public water supply laws apply to them equally. So, homeowners in condos who are a public water system may have an expense coming up in the next year if that standard is lower than it is now. And I had showed you that slide. I mean, the only, the only ones that were over twenty were the Pilot Groves. The other ones were non-detect, but they, and that's, that's just the community systems where people live. I didn't include all of the, you know, schools, restaurants, kind of, but the, whatever the standard is, will apply to all of those. Um, but if there's anything anybody wants to know about PFAS, don't just Google PFAS. You should Google Mass DEP PFAS, which is my next-to-last slide. Um, and that takes you to a landing page, and there are so many links that you can follow to find out about the toxicology, about if I'm a customer of a public water system, if I have a private well. So, if you Google that, that will get you everything you need. And then if you are interested specifically in the private well program, one of these links talks about private wells, and it takes you to what's called a story map. And this is the story map for the private well and public water systems. And it will take you through and it'll show in an interactive map. You can click on it. It'll show the names of the public water systems and when they were tested and, and things like that. So, that's something else that people find helpful. So, that was a lot. I know you have a really good foundation for it, so I thought I could just jump in and talk fast.
This is fantastic.
We're happy to answer any questions that you have, um, and if it would make sense to come back. If you, if you hear from residents who have questions, you know, we can come back or we can correspond with Town Administrator and provide answers. But if you all have any questions, we're happy to take them and, pretty much, I'm just gonna look at Kevin and Kevin.
Um, I assume we can put a link to this presentation up on our town website. So, um, people, it's, it will be an easy way for people um, in town to see it. Um, I had a quick que- oh, sorry. Yeah. Um, I just had a quick question. I'm looking in a couple of the areas where, so the red and the yellow, you were talking about the banding, basically. Um, how some of them, the yellow are closer to where it looks like the PFAS?
Yeah, it's.
I mean, uh, I was just trying to figure out how.
There's no rhyme.
Rhyme or reason?
There's no rhyme or reason, and it's not just PFAS. I mean, every time we do the red, yellow, green maps for any kind of neighborhood, there's always a red that's surrounded with greens, or a green that's surrounded by reds. And it's just, water goes where it wants to go. Sometimes there is a difference in how deep the well is, but it's just, it, we do not expect to see bands.
Okay.
We expect to see things that look like this.
Okay.
Which is why we do the sampling, the wells itself, to try to figure out. Instead of trying to figure out the complicated stuff first of where water wants to go, we look at the exposure first.
We go out in those circles. We start where it is.
Yeah.
And we go out.
Okay.
And does any of this information matter, how deep the well is?
Yes.
So.
Sometimes.
It's, it's sometimes. It's, it's how deep the well is, the, the geology, the geo hydro, geo hydrology, and where the well is screened and where the well pump depth is also. All those, oh, it's very, there's a lot of factors. Those, those all come later on, after you figure out and address the exposures, which is the paramount thing to do. And then once we figure that out, as MJ said, you draw the circles, you figure out where the circles end, and then you kinda, you know, okay, now that we've addressed the health issues, let's try to figure out how it got where it got and can we clean it up?
And what's going on down there. That's, and that's the part that the town's site is moving into, the part that the Bose site is moving toward. Is we got the, we got the um, exposures mitigated, now let's figure out what's going on under the ground.
Sometimes you can get a non-detect right around magentas and it does make sense. Well, notice, sorry.
Hang on, so I'm just gonna. Yeah, it's okay.
So, given that this is um, a water repellent type of material, how does it act when it's in solution in the water? Does it float?
So, it has um, it, it's a bunch of carbon and fluorine.
I saw that. C, 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 C.
And the longer that, that chain, the more toxic.
Yeah.
So, that's the ones we regulate are the longer chains. One end of that molecule is hydrophilic and one end is hydrophobic.
Oh, interesting.
So, figure that out. Um, so that, I mean, it, these, these chemicals are, are, it, it was like when they made Teflon and these other things. They made it intentionally never to break down, because it likes the water and it doesn't like the water.
Okay.
So, it's not like something you would talk about, like PCBs or something that lumps onto the soil.
Yeah.
It's in the water, it's in the soil.
Okay.
Just stays there.
It's pervasive.
It is pervasive and Stowe, you, you look at that map and. There's really nothing that we can point to to say Stowe was more industrialized than other towns. It was not. Uh uh there's, there's no specific thing that we can understand about why Stowe looks like this. And I think part of it is that um we started early with Stowe with that pilot program that led to the schools. Being discovered. So maybe that some of the other towns that we have um. Seventy seven cities and towns and I think we have discovered PFAS in forty two of them. Not positive, I don't have my scribbled notes, but at, at varying levels.
Can change daily.
Can change daily, yeah. But to have five sites, capital S sites in, in one town. Um is unique so far.
I noticed that um for example, this condo association that's, I forget the name of it. Oh, Villages of Stowe. There's four markings there, two yellow, two green. Was there four wells there and that's what this indicates?
I, I can't see it from there. So they may be public water supply wells. The circles, yeah, those are all PWSs.
I'd have to look at the specifics on what the concentrations were in our online portal. But the greens would be non-detects. It's, those are clumped kind of close together to figure that out, but we can look into that. Oranges were yellows.
They may um, they may have had detections early on. I'm not sure what, what this data pull was. Because I, when I made that chart, I think I was looking at the most recent data, which were all non-detect. The villages was, was non-detect. Regency was non-detect. All, all the condos with the exception of the Pilot Grove apartments.
And if they're non-detect now, they'll remain non-detect.
Not necessarily. No, we, especially in that it was a drought year, the water is behaving a little funny. I mean, we have a, a well in a different town. That was over ninety parts per trillion and the next time it was non-detect.
Interesting. So all of these data on the private, I'm sorry, keep going. Okay. Residents of private land is based on a one-time test unless there was a second test. But for the most part, this data show, these data show one-time tests except for the RTN locations.
The data um, on, for this map. Is based on the most recent data. So whatever the data on a map is, I'm not sure. Our, one of our contractors makes the maps for us. I, I think that that would represent the most recent data. For the, yeah, for the RTNs. If you wanted to see, for example, a specific house. You would have to actually go to the portal to look under the RTN. And there's not going to be a document that summarizes by address. You're going to have to read through all the stuff. If you're looking at one of the PWSs like the villages or Regency at Stowe, um that you can go in. Search on that in a different section of the portal and you'll be able to see everything right there. You can search just on PFAS six. And you can read through everything else. If something was sampled as part of the UMass program. That information on that story map thing is aggregated. It's not there by address. It is public information if someone asked for it, but part of participating in that program, something that. UMass told people was that they would only present it publicly in an aggregated way. But it is still public information if anyone asked us for it. So I don't have a map that shows all the private wells from the UMass program. It's a long answer.
No, no, that's, that's totally fine. I have one more question. And, and I'm sorry. Is, and I know this is the kind of question that there's no answer to, but I just was curious. I threw it on the wall. Is there? Just because we were talking about our own wells and I have a very deep well and it's green and. You don't have a deep well and it's not green. So um. Is there any correlation between the depth of the well and the geology? Like I know I'm in Tell. And evidence of PFAS or is it so variable? Like you say, one day it's magenta, the next day it's non-detect.
We just, we just don't know at this point and Kevin could speak for hours about different chemicals. Dry cleaning chemicals, what do they do? Gasoline, what does that do in, in the water or in the soil? But all of these sites, we didn't even have a standard until twenty nineteen. We weren't even testing public water supplies. They didn't have to start until twenty twenty one. I mean, you all were like so far ahead with the public water supply testing. Those requirements didn't kick in until twenty twenty one for smaller systems. So these sites, when we find them. Are not that far along that people have gotten to do the in-depth hydrogeo work to figure out. Does it look like there's some sort of fracture in the bedrock and the water's going that way? Does, is, does it look like that? There's all kinds of things that the hydrogeologists, the geologists, smart people can figure out once you start looking at it. But these sites aren't there yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
You good?
I'm good.
Did you? I do. I have a couple of questions. So our LSP told us that we may have to take remedial action on. The households that are under twenty parts per trillion by way of possibly a faucet attachment. Um is that because the federal standard may change and this is precautionary? Um or is there something else coming down that we would need to remediate all households that have any type of detection?
I'm not sure what the LSP was, was thinking about um right now. If it's under the drinking water standard. We require the responsible party to provide bottled water because you don't know when it's a private well. And you're sampling it quarterly or less frequently even. What's going to happen in the in-between time? So to be super protective of the public health, we ask them to provide bottled water as an option. And that way there's a higher level of protection for people in the, in the yellows. I think maybe they were talking about what's coming down the road because the number's very unlikely to be twenty. Um our cleanup standard would match the drinking water standard. Again, it's always going to be the same. So that may be something that happens down the road.
I might be misunderstanding, but I think it, she might be different to CEPs for under twenty.
But it would still be bottled water.
No, right, but I think you're asking at what point do they have to put treatment on below twenty?
Uh yes, but it was recommended that that may be the next thing that comes down the line for us is that under twenty would not, not to the extent of a poet system, but a. Um smaller faucet installed system.
That, that's under the power of the LSP to, to, to look into the options because they, because it's under the standard. They, they have to look at the feasibility of certain options and, and providing bottled waters is at least. The first option to continue that and, and they can look at other options. Um including possibly a point of, a point of use or point of entry or, or whatever other. They might consider as feasible or not feasible.
And then if we do our remediation, um and we are making our way with our installation of poet systems. Um and they do change the federal thresholds below the twenty parts per trillion. Do we then start all over again with those yellow properties if they are still reporting a level that's. Above what the new federal standard is?
So what, it will take time. Um the short answer is yes, but it will take time for. EPA to issue the national standard, which then we would have to go change our regulations to adopt the federal standard. And our cleanup program is separate. The reason the cleanup number and the drinking water number are the same is that the, a, a, an area that has private wells. Is um in a category that, of water that is or could be used as drinking water. So you look at the drinking water standard. So it's always going to match. So we would then have to change our regulations and that's a slow process. I think your LSP is right in, in being forward-thinking like that, but it's not going to happen overnight.
Right, but I think it's important for the board and the town to know. That uh we've been obviously appropriating a lot of money towards this. And with the idea that the federal standard may change, we will have to continue appropriating large amounts of money. To continue remediating if that threshold is lowered.
You might, yeah, at that point, you would have to go back and look at the yellows.
Thank you. And actually, um so I know you mentioned Gleeson Dale. Um so that is the area of town that I receive the most phone calls from. Um people are frustrated. Um they feel that no one's taking care of them. Um do those calls just get directed to DEP because there really isn't a responsible party that is actively working on it? Um and who should they contact?
Can we take those calls?
Uh one, one of the team members on my team, Timothy Moss, he's been fielding a lot of those calls from the residents. He, he's been doing a great, great job in, in trying to coordinate. The bottled water deliveries and the installation of the poets when necessary and coordinating. Any further sampling that we might need to do and fielding a lot of calls from concerned residents.
I think people were concerned that um the potentially responsible parties just stopped. So we had to get our contractor out there and pick up the work. So I, I hope the complaints are not that our contractor isn't. Bottled water is, it's, it's always, it's.
Very challenging.
It's very challenging. I know, because we're dealing with it with ours now.
The bottled water is, is tricky, but we're installing the poet systems as fast as we can and. Um last time we talked to Tim on, on Friday, it does seem that we're getting to some greens around, around Gleeson Dale.
I would, I just want to let you know too that at the mill itself, we've been doing some assessment work. And we were able, we actually collected the samples last week um working with EPA. So we, we just finished that work, which naturally there's a lot. As you guys probably know, there's a, a waiting period. To get the results back, sometimes two to three weeks because of the lab backup. So. That was done last week.
Uh thank you. And then I guess on a selfish note. Where, where the state has stepped in to, to deal with the Gleeson Dale issue, how is that money going to be recovered financially? Um I mean, obviously we and taxpayers are funding. Our contamination, but now the state is funding a contamination by a private entity. So is there a lien process?
There's a process that um we will recover. We had to send these notices to them saying. If you don't do it, we're going to come do it. And then we wait. Okay, now we're coming to do it because you didn't do it. And once we do the process correctly. We can cost recover three times the, the amount that we spent on the recovery, on the cleanup. So it's a big incentive. Once we start putting those messages out there that we're coming. To really reevaluate if that's your best strategy. That's what they decided to do. So we will. Cost recover that gets reduced to a judgment, it gets reduced to a lien, it's a super lien. So if they sell the property, we get our money. It's a, it's a good thing.
And staff time too.
Kevin is very good about writing up. Cost recovery.
Thank you. Excellent. Did you have your hand up?
Most of it was regarding the death of the well and the geology in this town, but it seems like.
Give you a name for the record.
Dorothy Granite, below my pond road. No, I would just curious somewhat about that too, geology. If there were any trends that it looked like it had gotten into any of the aquifers here or is it? But it seems like you're not going to know that for a while.
If ever.
Correct.
I mean, for, for our perspective, it, the most important part is to address the exposure issue. Because sometimes that can take a long time and sometime there is no clear con- conclusion. Because the data trends can change with, with droughts and, and. Being flush with water sometimes is just very, very complicated. That's why our, our program works the way it does because we want to make sure everybody's safe first.
Excellent. Any more questions? You have one?
You said that one day a site could test negative for PFAS and next day it could. Is there a recommended retesting? Interval?
So I, I can tell you what um a site site. Does. Um what a homeowner might do on their own is, is up to them. If there's PFAS. I get this wrong. If there's PFAS detected in a well, the responsible party has to keep testing it monthly.
Monthly for, depends if we have a, if we have a, 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 a point of treatment system on it. Then typically it's for, monthly for the first three months, quarterly thereafter and then.
If there's a treatment.
Annually, if there's a treatment system.
If there's not a treatment system, it's monthly.
And well, I don't quite understand. I wasn't eh part of the board when previous presentations were done. This treatment system, will it eventually get rid of the PFAS that's there or is it just to keep it out for, out of the drinking water?
It keeps it out of the water.
So this will be there as far as we know forever.
Forever chemicals.
They're, they're installed individually on the homes. So at some point we have to address remediating the site. To stop it from filtering out, but this will stop it from coming into the homes. So each home right now that's. Purple and red are what we're targeting for the individual poet systems.
And this device, does it have to be replaced every so often?
So it's, it's carbon canisters, like big, big Brita filters. The way they're installed and I assume that your contractor is doing it the way that we do is um two vessels. And you sample the water coming in, you sample the water in between, you sample the water coming out. Once you get any kind of detection in the middle, you swap the vessels. So the one that was getting less is getting more and then at that point you know it's time to get the media replaced. So you can order um. More, more carbon. And that carbon has to go away for expensive disposal, which again is one of the costs the town is having to, to deal with as part of your cleanup.
So the town will be replacing these filters for all its own.
What we're, what we're seeing, um and it obviously depends on how high the, the um concentrations are and the influence. Um but they last at least a year. I think we've had some systems on our sites two years.
Or more?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Depends how much water the folks use, depends the concentration.
Thank you.
But it's definitely sort of an early warning system. It's not that all of a sudden a, a light is going to go off and say PFAS is coming into your water. There's very. Um it's, it's very conservative and very predictive of when you're going to have to change the filters.
So it was sometimes folks install their own treatment system and they only install one because maybe the, the, the. The folks that they asked to install a treatment system, they're like, we can put one in and put two. A lot of times people, no, just put one. So that doesn't give them that early warning to be able to, so a lot of times if somebody has a single. Canister vessel, we'll have them sample even more often because we don't want it to bleed through because there is no. Red warning light.
So much information.
It is.
But thank you so much because I really do feel like this is a service to the community too, to be able to tune into this meeting and to be able to see this because. I know Denise fields a, a lot of questions. Um and I know just, I mean, you've answered a lot of my questions. We. Full disclosure, live in a red house, so. Um I have been aware of this for a long time.
Since twenty nineteen, we started.
Nineteen, we got all the bottled, all the bottles in the basement. But yes, this is, um, this is fantastic. Um and any, any other questions? I would say about individual site, this, it's great that to have the um RT, RM. RT. Um numbers and I would urge people to go and, you know, look that up and certainly contact Denise if you have any other questions.
We really appreciate the invitation to be here. We'll come, we'll come to Stowe anytime. We'll, we'll do new maps if necessary. As these cleanups go forward and there's more information, we should come back. And continue to update the board and, and to answer people's questions. So we're very happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
What makes the website portal so confusing is another portal that doesn't want the two zeros in front of it. And if you put it on the one she showed you and it says this doesn't work, you gotta put the two zeros.
Just do, do with the.
Do with the diagram I'm showing.
Don't just Google it. Do mass DEP PFAS and use the.
The one that she gave you, you need the two zeros or it's going to say this was not found.
So it's.
We'll post this in the morning.
Exactly the way to do it, but we appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
So you can call me.
Alright.
I'm not going to be as uh entertaining.
I know, seriously. Are these for us to keep? I'm going to bring this home and hang it on my wall. Thank you. Which ones first? Use the crown act. Crown first.
So um. Yeah, as new rules come down and laws come down, constantly one of my responsibilities is to look over our policies, procedures, rules, regulations. And uh one of the w- laws that have just been enacted goes. And uh, one of the w- w- laws that have just been enacted and goes into place on October twenty fourth is going to be the. Uh, creating a respectful and open world for natural hair act, the Crown Act, and um. So this is going to replace some of our existing rules and regulations. On how uh, the grooming of our officers present themselves. Uh, so basically, this is change, I sent it for review, I s- in your packets that uh, we'd be res. Uh, redoing our rule nine point one hairstyles for all officers and non-sworn personnel. Um, and then changing out like what um, male and uh, female is, is stated before. That's how it was addressed before in our policies and, I'm sorry, rules and regulations, which is different than our policies and procedures. Um, cause we have many rules that we have to follow, uh, so. Uh, this really, it, it just makes it uh, all inclusive and uh, more uh, respectful under people on, on what they can. Uh, how we are able to allow different hairstyles and what we're supposed to be able to do. There's no law enforcement exemption on this law either, so it's not like I can just turn around and say. Uh, well, we're police, we're law enforcement, you have to wear your hair a certain way. Um, while we still can maintain standards uh, for safety reasons. Um, we can still uh, be respectful of everybody, so this is really just addressing what we need to, uh, to be, come in compliance with the law. So, that's, I could read it all to you, but I'm sure you've seen your.
I think this is.
We had it.
We have it.
Um, any questions on anything?
I don't. I don't, I'll take a motion then.
Well, I have a one quick question.
You have a question?
Have your staff or have the, has team seen it and have any issues?
So with the whole policies and rules and regulations, anytime there is a change of working conditions. Uh, so we have to go to, you know, get the unions input on it, or at least open it up for any negotiations that they would like. So this was presented to uh, the union, um, a few, like a few weeks ago. And uh, they had time to review it and give any input, and uh, they said that they were okay with this, so they, they, they didn't uh, want to go into any negotiations with us on this. Um, so we always do that with any new policy or, or, or rule or regulation.
Thank you, um, what do you think this is gonna do for recruitment?
I don't know, actually.
I don't think it'll.
I, I don't know, speaking of recruitment, there's some sirens going, you know. But uh, I, I don't know what this is gonna do for recruitment, you know, I hope it uh, opens the door up for more individuals that think that they didn't have a cha- a chance before.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, was it last year, we got rid of the tattoo policy, that we had to keep our tattoos covered up. Um, you know, there's a lot of vet, especially veterans that have uh, tattoos on their arms that we can see, so. You know, hopefully uh, this will just be another opportunity for individuals, um. I, I'd love to see more people apply, I've always said that you are recruiting, and I've talked to other chiefs, our recruiting is hard. Uh, it's, it's hard to get people to apply, so, you know, the more opportunity or more availability we have for individuals. You know, I think the more people we'd get.
Excellent.
I actually did think of a question.
Sure.
So, just to make sure I understand, is it now the policy that there's no standards at all for hair?
No, there is still s- safety sta- it still has to be put up, but you can still have um. I can, I, I can say, I can read it, so, but natural protective hairstyles, which include but not limited to natural protective hairstyles such as braids, locks, twists. Bantam knots and other uh, forms are permitted, provided that they are in a professional appearance.
Okay.
So it still has to be a professional appearance. Uh, multiple braids are allowed, however, it may not contain brightly beaded collars or bands. Objects in the hair, including but not limited to pins, berets, beads, bands, clips, shall be inconspicuously placed. For the sole purpose of holding the hair in place, um, and, and again, this is really all for, you know, can't interfere with the officer's safety. That's really what it comes down to, but um, you know, I, I, this is a lot complying with the law, as well as being respectful of individuals, but. You know, if anyone had like a opportunity to do this, I don't see a problem in our department that we would have prevented it before. As long as that there was safety, but, eh, I mean, so I don't have the option of, of doing anything.
I was wondering if that was gonna come out. I was saying, I wonder if he's gonna make fun of himself, and you did.
Yeah, but um, no, this is, you know, it keeps us in compliance and it does make a, a more available option for the, for the publics to apply for us, so. I, I wouldn't even say that we would have. Like looked at someone a different way if they came and applied, so like, you know, for us, this is like an easy thing for us, cause we're already doing this, like this is. This is not something that like, oh, we have to change the way we're doing it, no, we've always looked at people uh, respectfully and welcomed them in, so I, I don't think it's, this is a big leap. This is just putting pen to paper.
Great.
Alright, uh, with that, I will take a motion.
I move, I move to approve the update to police rules and regulations to conform with the Crown. Creating the respectful and open world for natural hair act, as presented by Police Chief Michael Solisi, Solisi at the chief.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, that's unanimous, and on that note.
Let's go fundraiser.
Let's talk about.
Let it all hang out.
So you're gonna relax.
Uh, two years ago, we, we've done this uh, fundraiser for uh, the Home Base No Shave Campaign. Uh, Home Base is a project or a foundation where uh, veterans can go and get mental health uh, counseling. And uh, part of their fundraiser is that, uh, if an officer donates a hundred dollars uh, to this. Foundation to this cause, then uh, the board or myself will allow them to uh, grow a beard, which is like a, a big deal. Cause they're not usually allowed to do that, uh, two years ago, we were able to collect thirteen hundred dollars within the department, and then the. Community of Stowe was gracious enough to add to that to a total of over three thousand dollars. Um, I think this is a, this is an effort that was, going back to your question on the other one, on the other policy, what. Brought forth by the officers themselves, uh, this was, you know, they asked me if we could do this, and I said absolutely, we supported it two years ago. And Denise was uh, great, you know, supportive of that then, and uh, we just wanna continue on. Uh, and so they're ready, I'm, I'm sure they're ready to go, like in a moment's notice here on this one, uh, but they'll have to wait till, and you know, November first to start.
And for Sergeant Scott?
Uh, for Sergeant Scott, she uh, has the ability to, I talked to her earlier, she can uh, paint her, her.
Oh, cool, I noticed that in the rain that you couldn't wear, and I was like, oh, okay, so she gets to paint her nails?
She gets to paint her nails, yes, and we talked about that tonight, and she's like, she likes the flashier colors, and I'm like, that's fine, whatever, you go whatever you want, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
So, I think it's wonderful, I'm sorry.
No, go.
I think it's wonderful, the only thing, you know, based on our previous discussion about safety. Obviously, the, the beard would have to be trimmed a certain way, so you're not interfering with safety or identification or.
So the question is, can the guys really grow it out to a length where it's unsafe?
Yes, okay, fine.
So there are some that can, and uh, and it still has to be, eh, you know, eh, maintained in a, uh, in a neat manner, um. In one month, I'd be, it'd be hard for, you know, somebody to really grow.
Okay, good.
But then, uh, yeah, it's gonna, I think it'll, you know, I, I, it'll be interesting to see like some of the officers, cause we have some new officers. I know that they've been growing their mustaches out, so uh, we'll see how the rest of it goes too.
Okay, thank you.
I have a dumb question, how is this affected by the Crown Act? Does the Crown Act cover facial hair?
Only hair, it's only.
Only top of the head?
But beards are just not.
Okay.
Yeah, the policy says for right now, the corner of um, the officers can grow their mustaches down to the corner of their mouths. So just right down there, that's it, that's why they all look the same.
Remember, that was the policy in the Air Force, yeah.
Yeah, so um, I know that they're excited for this and uh, that they wanted ahead and do it.
Excellent.
I mean, I'm gonna participate too, I never, like, I've done it once before. I can't grow it on top, might as well just try and size.
More power to you.
Um, alright, any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, let's take a motion.
I move that the select board allow the Stowe Police Department to suspend certain rules and regulations. Nine dot one C, comma, nine dot two and nine dot three. Pertaining to grooming for the month of November in order to support the Home Base No Shave November fundraiser. This fundraiser is for the benefit of veterans, service members, military families and the families of the fall.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, congratulations, will you come back at the end of November and show us?
I will, yes.
Fantastic. If anyone has like, a really good.
A really one.
Let us know too, yeah, please, for sure.
Isn't there also an opportunity for townspeople to donate, to support it?
Yes, absolutely, so that will be put out on our social media page and um, that people can go right onto it right now, it's uh, created already, and then we can um. We'll be putting that information out, uh, two years ago, like I said, it was thirteen hundred dollars, the officers donated, and then the community gave. Uh, over, I think it was like seventeen hundred dollars, so we had over three thousand dollars.
That's great.
To, to, for this cause.
Great.
It's fantastic.
Alright.
Alright, thank you so much, have a good night.
Night.
Thanks, Mike.
Alright, um, is Debbie?
She is, I'm asking her to unmute now.
Does anybody want any of these?
I do, thank you. Don't want to taste? Alright.
She's muted, hang on.
Ms. Woods.
Ma'am, ma'am chair.
Um, excellent, so we have you on. Excuse me, we have you on, um, to talk about the charter committee. And I'm gonna let you kind of ask us what you need from us, and then we can discuss. And let's move on from there.
Perfect, it's um, fairly simple, the ask, um, the charter co- the charter review committee is asking all of the boards. All the committees and the um, the public to submit s- suggestions on changes that they would like to see to the charter. Um, so we will be gathering those and also not only the changes, but why they're asking for the change. So to put a little, kind of a little background into why they're asking for change, other than just saying, we want this to change. Um, we know all the boards are very busy, and, and so um. We're really trying to encourage them to do it, unfortunately fairly quickly, cause we ourselves are on an incredibly tight timeline. We have to have this all wrapped up in a pretty bow, ready for submission at town meeting by, we're guessing the middle to end of March. And we have a lot of work to do in between there, because we are going to get all kinds of comments from people. And the biggest thing we're going to have to do is determine, is it a charter? Is it a bylaw? Because it's kind of mushy where it is, you know, you were talking, I think in your, um, in your beginning comments about. The town administrator review, charter says you gotta do it. It may or may not be the right place to have the charter say, this is how you do it, it may more, be more of a bylaw, as an example. So what we're asking is, put it all out there, tell us what you, what suggestions you're asking for. And then through our due diligence and our process, we will make the decision based upon, you know, expertise and, and various uh, conversations. Is it truly a charter, because that's kind of the skeleton, or is it sort of the meat and potatoes, and that's a bylaw, so we're gonna be doing that. Um, the biggest thing is, what we need from the select board is a single list of agreed to. Recommendations on or before November fifteenth. And we're asking for all input, be it from the select board, all boards, all committees, all residents. To have it into us on or before the fifteenth, so I think what that says for the select board schedule. Is that your meeting in November is on November eighth. And ideally, what we would like to do i- is, be it myself or other members of the um. Of the charter review committee, come before the, you know, come to that select board meeting. And have you go through the agreed to list. Of your changes or your, your rec- your suggestions for changes, so that we can understand what you're asking for, and we can take it forward. So that's our ask, it's, it's aggressive, but we are even under a more aggressive timeline.
Got it. Um.
Can I ask a follow up?
Yep.
So Debbie, when you and I discussed this previously, you had really wanted the changes by the end of October, so you were extending it to November fifteenth.
Uh, correct, and after our conversation, knowing that you folks have a lot on your plate over the next week or two. Our absolute kind of drop dead date is November fifteenth.
So the board this evening, I'm sorry, the board this evening just changed because November eighth is the election and we cannot meet that night? So they will be meeting on November fifteenth.
And that's fine, if on the fifteenth, just making note here, if on the fifteenth, we can, you know, the committee, our, the charter review committee. Can come and, come sit with the select board, and we have that agreed to list of your recommendations, we will be very, very happy.
Sure.
You know, we're trying to make it work for everybody, each board, but also the, the amount of work, once. Our hard work is going to begin once we have everybody's requests, and then it's like, we have, our goal is to have a. Public meeting, not a public hearing, but a public meeting, mid-December, so that everybody can hear all the changes that have been requested. And, and kind of sort that through, and then we have about, I think a month to a month and a half. To get all those changes in some kind of form, that we can have them reviewed legally to then take the next step. So we don't have a lot of time, and that's why we're really asking for on or before November fifteenth.
Right, um. As you can see, we only have three board members in this room tonight, um, so I think what I, and I'm gonna look to you Denise to see if. I say anything wrong, if, if we can send changes that we individually would like to you. Can you compile them for the next meeting, so that we can have it as an agenda item, so that we can all discuss? I just, I wanna have something on paper, I don't wanna have us coming in and one person, like, I'd rather have like something to discuss. So is that something that would, yep, is that something that would fantastic?
And I can send it out to obviously Ellen and Courtney.
To Ellen and Courtney as well, um, with a return date by the Thursday before the agenda goes on or whatever.
Yes, it would have to be included in the packet.
Yep.
So, I just wanna make sure I understand, you're asking. Megan, you're asking us, the review, the charter review committee, to take input from five of you?
No, 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 not at all, I was, sorry, I was looking to Denise, um.
Oh, okay.
We, we as a board are gonna individually send our charter, like our proposed changes to Denise. She can compile them, um, I don't, I mean, they can go under our names, right, and then um, just for open meeting purposes.
Okay.
Um, and then that can go out in our next packet, and then we can put it as an agenda item to discuss it, and then hopefully. What I would hope is that if we've all done our homework, kind of going into that meeting, that we can have a list for you. For that meeting, either on the fifteenth, or we could vote on it that night and then just give it to you.
Right, and as long as, I mean, the, the vote on the fifteenth, as far as we're concerned, that's fine, as long as we can leave the meeting on the fifteenth.
Yep.
With the list that is agreed to by the select board, that'd be great, to make your life a little bit easier, um. We, and Kathy Sfera is on the line, and I do think this is true, that we have put a form out on the webpage.
Yes.
Um, the select, uh, the, I was gonna say the select board committee, the charter review committee. And it may be a very good thing for you folks to follow, because it, it tells, it asks for different things. Specifically, we need to have the section number, the title, the this, so it may be if you follow that and give that to Denise. Then that will make your life, and more importantly, our life even easier, Kathy, anything you wanna add to that?
Um, no, I think that's correct, and I think the goal is to get everything in that format, so that it'll feed into a spreadsheet. So we can easily organize all the suggestions.
And what we're asking is one form per change, so it'd be very easy for you, just line up the, line up your forms, fill them out, it's really pretty simple. It asks for all the uh, important information, you probably can skip a lot of the name and some of that information, just fill it out once we know it's coming from the select board. But it will at least facilitate, I think Denise's correlation of the information, and then absolutely will facilitate us taking it to the next step.
So what I will do is, um, because in order for you to access that form, you'd have to submit it to them.
Oh, I see.
So I will go through and get the information that's on there and send that out to you.
Okay, fantastic.
Or print out one and just kind of fill it out, whatever, whatever is easiest for you, yep.
And I do wanna just remind the board members, um, that this, that individually, you are still welcome to submit your own changes through the charter review form. This is just what the board itself wants to support.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is get the, kind of the list from each of the boards, so that we know. Select board is looking for these, or agrees to these, planning board agrees to these. Board ABC agrees to those, so that we have that, but absolutely, as Denise said. If you, if your favorite didn't make it on the list, and you wanna submit it as a private citizen, you're more than welcome to, and we, we would encourage that.
Excellent. Alright, sounds great, we will.
And this statement is true for anyone listening tonight, if anybody has changes they wanna submit. It's on the front page of the town website, it's also on the charter review committee's page, there's a link to the form. Anyone can submit as an individual as well as a committee member.
It's also on our Facebook and our Twitter.
And an email went out.
And an email went out, cause it was on the website, yes.
Yeah.
Covering all of our bases.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, this only, right, this only comes around once every ten years, so it really, and a lot of things have changed, the world's changed in the past ten years. So we really wanna try to get it up to date, and with the current. So we really wanna try to get it up to date and with the current state of the, state of the, state of the town, and then move it forward for the next ten years.
Fantastic. Thank you all so much for um for volunteering for this committee too, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alright.
Alrighty.
Bye, have a good night.
Thanks, ladies.
Good night.
Um okay, so we are moving on to the EDIC. The EDIC charge, I just, I'm gonna report out what I did. I don't know that we're in a position to move forward on a charge tonight, given our makeup, unless we want to, but um basically, I met with Tom um Farnsworth uh from the EDIC and Lori Clark. Um we had a chat about, I I went back with the feedback that I had gotten from this board. Lori went with the feedback she had gotten from the Planning Board. Um and um Tom kind of was looking at the mission statement as what is the EDIC and who do they report to? So where we were kind of getting in the weeds a bit at our last meeting about like putting goals in or putting other things, I think this mission statement just needs to be a very high level, kind of what are they supposed to be doing? Then, once we've determined who they're reporting to, which I believe is the Select Board, um is what we, I I had talked about with um Planning and um and with Tom, um then we would develop kind of a list of like, much like we'll do with the Town Administrator, a list of goals, a list of deliverables that we would want from that board. Um so that they feel like they have a little bit more um direction from someone else. And that they're not just running amok, doing, not running amok, but like, so that they're running, that they're doing stuff without um any direction from us, and then, so that there's not a disconnect where it's like one, this board thinks that they're supposed to be doing whatever, but they never got the direction from us, if that makes sense? Um so I do think the mission statement, um.
We have various versions in our packet.
Right.
What are we supposed to do with that?
Right, so I think um.
I mean, are we gonna be doing wordsmithing of three different versions here, or what is the intent?
What I think is that the final paragraph of the email from Lori is
Close.
As clo- uh that would be the version I would want to work from.
Okay, and then, cause then there's one blue line that was added to that.
Yes, and I think if, I get a little squidgy talking about rural character sometimes, just because it's I understand where that comment is coming from, sometimes that can also make other people feel like they're not included and 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 so um but I also feel like that is the thing that keeps coming back.
Yeah, you can have a shopping center with a rural character. And yet, there's so many improvements that could be done to those, to those areas.
Right.
So, okay, so I just wanted to know what we were doing, because then we have you know, the list with the bullets.
Right, 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 right. So I I think the most important thing would be for us to go back to, for me to be able to go back to Tom and sort of say, this is this is what we're working off of. Um and then we would have another meeting where we talk about what we want them to work on. I just don't know, given the makeup of the, we don't have the full board right now, and I don't, I would like to have this discussion more with the full board. Um unless either one of you feel like you're ready to move forward on this tonight, if you feel strongly about that. So I think what I would like to do is not, is move this to the November fifteenth meeting. Um that will give me time to, I feel like I was just throwing data at the packet, just to meet the deadline. Um and so that can give me time to either go back to Tom and Lori, figure out what I'm gonna present to you all with respect to, this is what the mission statement is. Can we vote on this? This is sort of what the plan is, as far as um how we're going to develop goals, what the deliverables are gonna be, what the timeline is going to be, really setting them up for success. Um and I don't think we're there in this moment, so I think if it's okay with everyone, I would like to kind of come back on the fifteenth with a little bit more information, unless our meeting is seventeen years long.
Yep, that's what I was gonna ask.
It'll be what it is.
It'll be what it is.
It'll be what it is.
Well, you are an optimistic person.
Um alright, so we're gonna move uh, do we have to move on anything? Do we have to move on moving it?
No.
Okay, great, so that's done. Um one thing I, so we're gonna move on to the next, and that is uh Town Administrator's uh goals. I think, does anyone have any questions about, this is basically what we discussed last week?
Right.
Um did anybody have any comments on it? I am gonna ask for a vote tonight, because we have a quorum and because next week Hector's not gonna be here. We're not gonna have a full complement, and Denise really needs this to kind of be tied off, so.
I think we discussed this fairly at length last week?
Yep.
Or last two weeks ago or whatever?
I just think you do need to fine tune number two, cause it involves the town hall.
Right, that was our discussion, um. So, oh, so this Assistant Moving Forward Town Hall Improvement Plan, it feels like what we came out of from that meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So what, what um
What are the minutes?
How do we best wanna say what happened there? Um you were going to look into oh my god, I did not take the notes that I wanted to take at that meeting, there have been so many meetings.
In the, in the minutes that I drafted, I put, I put several um takeaways from that meeting.
Okay.
Um I think from my recollection, it was to um find some comparable buildings in nearby communities and find out what their revenues were, what their uses are.
Right.
Um uh perform some basic um improvements. Um and I think really figure out what the vision of the center is, including that building, which to me, that's gonna be a much longer term. Um and as I said last week, I don't know that anything can change enough in this area that it's gonna change that building, but uh we can certainly put that on the list. And I would say, I mean, I I do think we need to put I I do think we need to put this back on an agenda, um. I'm leaning towards, after coming out of that, that we do, I do recommend, um or I believe I would recommend to the board, that we um thank the members of the Town Hall Restoration Committee, but we do disband it at this point and form more of a Building Use Committee to do some of that groundwork of figuring out um what the comparables are, what type of revenue can be generated, what type of programs and projects can be conducted in a space like that. And really come back and figure out what it could be used for. That seemed to be the overlining, over overwhelming theme of the evening, is what could the building be used for? Um I think we need to get some of that groundwork done before we can really plan the future of it. Um so, I I don't know how you wanna work that into a goal, but.
Um well, I think what I would wanna do is, I mean, it like how vague can we make that goal, given the fact that you have all of the action items that you will, that that you will be doing from that? Um or do you want to?
Well, I mean, you certainly could make it.
Say, collect information per the joint boards meeting?
Yeah, or continue to move the town hall project forward in the direction as advised by the boards, or, I mean, it could be just as basic, and then I implement really what was discussed that night.
Okay. Um.
If you wanted to keep a town hall goal on the list.
Well, I I think I do, because it did feel like, for the first time, we sat down and had a real like it was a great conversation between the three boards, to really start talking about some actual action items that I think you can have deliverables coming out of um having, so I think, I think that would be something.
Well, that could be it, um carry out action items as determined by the October fourth Town Hall Joint Boards Meeting.
I would be fine with that, what about you?
Well, I think I'd like to see the minutes, because they'll be become the guiding documents, and I know they're here. And the the thing that came out in the minutes that I thought was very helpful was that everyone agreed it was a building worth saving. But there was a need to understand the uses, potential uses, but there was also, that was not the only action item that we have to find out what the uses and then plan around that, that was in my, the way I took it as a component of preserving an historical building. So I don't think we can separate the fact that, at least in my opinion, I should say, that there's the building has a histor- history, it has a sense of so, right? It's it's our history, and if we had all the money in the world, we'd be saving it just because it's historical and because it's important to the town. But certainly, we have to integrate the uses, the future uses. I don't think the uses that's my personal opinion, I'll leave it alone there, but in any event, um so I think we have to be very careful, I like the suggestion that you made, but then these minutes have to really reflect. Because that will become, the minutes will become the directive.
Right.
So I'm happy with.
Saying, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was not being clear.
Nope, I got it.
Okay, so I would say I agree with the language you suggested, but then we really have to make sure the minutes are reflective of both components of the committee.
I see.
Does that make sense?
It does, I'm just thinking.
It's not just a Building Use Committee, it's a Building Use and
Preservation Committee, or, yes.
Right.
Um.
So if I may, I I respectfully don't agree a hundred percent with that.
Yeah.
Uh because there was talk about potential selling the building.
There was.
So there's more than just preservation.
That's right, so exactly. And the drive to selling would be, we can't just let it fall apart. If we can't afford this, sell it to someone who can, right? And so I a hundred percent agree with you, so it's not preservation, so it's a Building Use and futures, or something, I
Right, well, and I think we can, cause that's not being recommended tonight, a new committee. Um but I guess whatever the goal is of the project is what the committee would then function as.
Correct.
Um so if the if the goal is to uh determine reuse capability, revenue opportunities, and
Historical maintenance, or historical, it's, history's gotta be part of this, in my opinion. Maybe I'm the only one, I know that there are other people though out there who
No, you're not, I I just, I think, but I think that part of how I see Denise's goal is just, it with this project is just all the fact finding.
Oh, I know that, but we've so, we've tied the goal.
I know, to, I know, to the meeting, I I see, I see what you're saying.
If, and all I'm saying is that, then the minutes have to be reflective
Yep.
of the action items we're seeking. For your goal, I think you just being a good resource to the committee and um keeping the board informed or ask, that all is, I'm a hundred percent there, and so it's just how we linked them, so we went down this rabbit hole.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, and so I think probably for time purposes and all of that, that we don't link it to the meeting, that we separate it, cause I, we'd have to go back and redo the minutes and, right?
No, they haven't been accepted yet.
Right, they haven't been accepted, but.
It's probably just a couple sentences, I I thought the minutes were very good, so let's just, I don't know, Hector has a question.
Yes.
Can we just make the goal to continue oversight of the Town Hall disposition?
Disposition, what's the definition of disposition? Have you guys been listening to the Supreme Court? Oh my god, they're going so deep into the definition of adjacent, does that mean a budding? Does it not mean a budding? Oh, it's amazing, so then disposition, what does disposition mean? It usually means uploading and see you later, bye.
Position to me.
Open up Webster's or something. Absolutely, disposition usually means, see you later, boom.
Um.
If you look at it as disposal, I was looking more as
What's dispose?
What to do, over, continue to oversee the Town Hall project with a side towards future use improvements or disposition.
Yeah, that works for me, that works for me.
What was the second thing you said, future use something in disposition?
Future use.
I can just watch it back.
Improvement.
Or disposition, or disposition.
Disposition.
Yes, alright, fantastic.
Yes, I like that.
Alright, so.
So it's continued over, continue oversight of the Town Hall project with a focus on future use improvements or disposition.
Yep.
Do you like that, does that make sense?
That's fine, yep, that makes sense.
As long as it's something you feel like you can achieve. That's really the
Achieve or accept as a challenge.
Except as a challenge to work towards.
Yes.
Um alright, well then, that one's done. Does anybody have any other comments? We will have to vote it, I guess. Um any other?
No.
Okay, so Hector, will you read this with, um you'll do the
Will you dispose of the motion?
But it's gonna be with amendments, or with discussed amendments?
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-three Town Administrator's School list, including the discussed amendment for goal number two.
Second.
Any further discussion? Nope, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Great, what's next?
Minutes.
Minutes. All the minutes. I uh bless you Joyce, these were some minutes.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for getting them on. Um I did not have any comments.
I had no comments, except to thank Joyce for putting all this together.
Are we talking about all of them?
We're
Going to do the first ones first.
Um do you have comments on any of the minutes?
I'm just looking at the um October fourth, but the others I did not, and I would abstain from the first one, cause I wasn't there.
If, but then we don't have a quorum, so I can still vote, right?
Okay.
I can vote, yeah.
You can vote, yeah.
Okay, so I usually abstain, there's a quorum, but there isn't. Okay, so I didn't um yeah. I did like the way these were worded, I thought the summaries were very good. I mean, that was amazing.
Yep. Um alright, so if I will take a motion whenever anyone's ready.
So each individual?
Each individual one, yep.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting as drafted.
Second.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you?
Aye, sorry.
So that's unanimous.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting as drafted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, and?
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the October fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting as drafted.
I'd just like to look at those a little more, cause these are very important.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So on, in terms of the um
Do you wanna push it off to the next meeting?
We can.
Um, well, it might just be I mean, the key part is that, um which I was great to see in the minutes, that all felt the need to save the building, et cetera, et cetera. Then members agreed that the following information would be helpful, that's absolutely correct. Um but I wouldn't want those bullets to be seen as the be all and end all. So I was thinking, agreed that the following information the following minimum, and I'd like historical to be in here, you know, in some capacity, like tendence were, well, historical wasn't there. Well, I think I mentioned it.
Well, I think I mentioned it, didn't I? I, in my vague language that there was, it wasn't just about use, but also about the, the history. Did I? No.
I don't remember if you specifically mentioned it, but I do remember.
But I remember it was being mentioned.
Was discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we need, see if this makes sense. All felt the need to save the building because of its historic nature or something? Or is that putting words in people's mouths that weren't really there?
No, I, I think that that is a general statement that was even, but I don't, but I don't know.
Okay. And then, um, members agreed that the following information.
Right, cause no one actually voted on the information. It was just, this is helpful in making decisions, which is why I worded it as just helpful. It wasn't, this is what we want, this is what we need.
Right.
Um, because
This was, this was the wrap up when I did the straw poll of everybody, right? This is, this is basically what that is, so.
Because there weren't any formal votes on what
Right.
what people wanted.
You know, the first bullet handles it, information from surrounding towns on their historic buildings regarding how they are used.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you write these?
I did.
She did.
Well, I did them, I did them the next morning bef- while I remembered everything.
Oh my God. All right, then I'm okay with these.
Okay.
The way they are, so, um, I will second. And now you can call a
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, and that's unanimous. Fantastic. Okay. Anybody have questions on correspondence?
I don't remember that correspondence. I have to open that file up.
It's on the, um, bottom of the agenda now.
Yeah, that's the Yep, so.
That's right.
It looks like, so as far as
Good.
Oh, right, so they've set a date for the Randall trivia. And it's, it looks like it's the twenty-eight?
The Friday.
Seven.
And I may
To eight thirty.
Not be able to go because I have, may have to attend the memorial.
Okay.
But
All right.
It's not firmly scheduled yet.
All right, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. But I'm such a bad trivia person, but I think it'll be a lot of fun to do. I'd go out first thing. What's the third letter after B?
I think it's a group. It's a group effort.
That's right, we're all together. I think Courtney said she's no good at it either, so we'll be just really wonderful.
Um, did you guys have any questions on any more of the correspondence? No? All right, I'm gonna take that last motion. A charge to adjourn.
Oh.
All in favor? All right.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you all for coming and watching.
Scrambling, look.